Welcome to the October twenty first, two thousand twenty four City Council Meeting. Uh, we ask, request that you silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And tonight's invocation is by Mrs. Marshall, and then we'll have the pledge. Please stand.
Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance during this meeting to help us think with clear minds and to be productive and efficient. And as always, please watch over and protect our military and our first responders. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, present.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes, here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Widdon?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Excuse Mrs. Snee, second by.
Motion to excuse Mrs. Snee by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee is excused.
Thank you. Moving on, uh, could you please read the summary of the minutes from October seventh meeting, please?
Minutes of council, October seven, twenty twenty four, committee reports. Committee of the whole, uh, had a report read regarding, um, advancement or future compensation for elected positions. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, approving final record plan Phase One Somerset Reserve Plan Development. Also, uh, committee discussed, uh, asking the consultant of the comprehensive plan to look at requiring recreation trails and subdivisions. Finance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared regarding purchasing of additional water meters and appurtenances. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for a new farm lease associated with Paul G. Duke Park. Street and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, uh, for an amendment for the consultant regarding the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project. The, uh, council president reported regarding several liquor license applications. Resolution number R fifty twenty twenty four bids for the farm lease agreement first reading and adopted. Resolution number R fifty one, twenty twenty four. Amending a resolution regarding increasing authorization for water meters and appurtenances for twenty twenty four was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R fifty five, twenty twenty four. Amending the agreement with prime construction management regarding construction administration for the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project first reading and adopted. Resolution number R fifty three, twenty twenty four, agreement with F O P, Ohio Labor Council Troy Police Officers, first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R fifty four, twenty twenty four, agreement with F O P, Ohio Labor Council Troy Police Sergeants Association, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R fifty five, twenty four, authorizing agreement with AFSME for the AFSME employees was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R fifty six, twenty twenty four, an agreement with AFSME for the Park Department employees was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O thirty five, twenty twenty four, record plan for Somerset Reserve Plan Development, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O thirty six, twenty twenty four, the first reappropriation of funds for the year was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O thirty seven, twenty twenty four, amending salary ordinance related to police officers and sergeants, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O thirty eight, twenty twenty four, also regarding wages of certain employees was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O thirty nine, twenty twenty four, fixing salaries and wages of certain employees was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O forty, twenty twenty four, fixing salaries and wages of certain employees was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O forty one, twenty twenty four, fixing salaries and wages of certain employees, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O forty two, twenty twenty four, salaries for elected officials, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at seven forty-five P M.
Move to adopt, second. Motion to adopt the minutes is by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions tonight, uh, our committee reports, I'm sorry. Um, well, hey, Patrick wanted it short. Um, community economic development, Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two reports tonight. Uh, the first report, uh, this committee met on October fourteenth to review the recommendation of the Planning Commission that zoning code amendments be, uh, proved to prohibit adult use cannabis operators. Uh, discussions included that council should provide for public input prior to making a recommendation on the Planning Commission recommendation. There were also discussions regarding extending the current moratorium on applications for adult use cannabis operators by ninety days. It is recommendation of this committee that the November fourth council agenda include public comment item on the subject of prohibiting adult use cannabis operators within the city. It is also the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, extending by ninety days the current moratorium of applications for adult use cannabis operators. And this is respectfully submitted by, uh, Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chair.
Questions, input? Mr. Schilling?
Thank you. Mr. President. Okay, the second item, um, report we have tonight, uh, again, this committee met on October fourteenth to consider taking ownership of four vacant properties from the Miami County Board of Revisions and transferring the parcels to the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio, C I C, so that the C I, C I C, uh, can market the properties on the council, on the city's behalf. The parcels are located at three six six Miami Street, one zero one five Meadow Lane, four zero two Lake Street, and one seven seven Finsbury Lane. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the acceptance of the four parcels noted above and the transfer of the four parcels to the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio, so that the C I C can proceed to sell the properties for redevelopment. And this again was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chair.
Questions on that one? Thank you, sir. Moving on, finance, Mr. Severt.
Thank you. Uh, the first report I have is the, oh, here it is. Uh, the committee, uh, members Schilling and Westfall met October fourteenth to discuss the twenty twenty five funding for the Miami County Health District. Troy's funding is based on the middleage equivalent that will be paid by the other political subdivisions in the county for public health services. Troy's payment is funded from the general fund. Troy's twenty twenty five funding would be four hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, an increase of approximately two point one percent over the twenty twenty four funding. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize the twenty twenty funding to the Miami County Health District for Public Health Services for Troy citizens in the amount of four hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Miss Westfall, and myself as chairman.
Questions, comments? Continue, Mr. Severt.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. The other, uh, finance committee report deals with the adjustment to the schedule fees. Committee members, uh, Schilling and Westfall met October fourteenth to consider adjustments to the schedule fees related to fees charged by various offices and departments. There's a attached exhibit to that, um, report. Uh, the fees would be the business regulation fees, the cemetery fees, the development department fees, which will be planning and zoning and development, the engineering fees, the fire department fees, the park sponsorship fees, the police department fees, and the utility rates. Uh, and it's about a, a page document that will be attached as part of that, um, legislation. It is the recommendation that, of this committee that legislation be prepared, amending the schedule of fees as proposed by staff effective January one, twenty twenty five. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Miss Westfall, and myself as chairman.
Mr. Titterton, you have comment?
Uh, I do. Uh, just to clarify, so, uh, Mr. Severt is correct. It's about eight pages of, uh, uh, scheduled fees. Those are on our website. However, very few of them were recommended to be changed. So, uh, eight, eight pages doesn't mean eight pages worth of, uh, changes to fees. Uh, we had a couple in the, uh, uh, cemetery operations, uh, the, uh, fire department. And then, uh, we wanted to codify at the request of the park board, uh, the fees related to, uh, the sponsorships that they passed at their, uh, park board meeting.
Are, are the ones on, on the website that changed? Are they indicated that they changed or increased?
Uh, we can make sure that they are, uh, highlighted.
Might be quicker.
Sure, that'd be fine.
All right, moving on, parks and recs, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you. Um, this committee met October fourteenth to consider the next step of a park maintenance building project by authorizing design services and ordering the metal building by Brumball Construction, Inc. of Arcanum, Ohio, following the Ohio Revised Code, O R C, process of design build for this project. The metal structure has a four-month lead time for delivery. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared authorizing Brumball Construction, Inc. to commence the design portion of the park maintenance building project and to order the metal structure at a combined cost not to exceed five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Consideration of emergency legislation is supported by the metal, so that the metal structure can be ordered without delay in the design proceed. Respectfully submitted, Kristi Marshall, Jeff Widdon, and myself as chair, Susan Westfall.
Questions on our building? All right, that leaves us to streets and sidewalks. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, sir. On October fourteen, the committee met regarding a professional services agreement with L J B, Inc. for the Phase Two design of the downtown safety and streetscape renovation project at a total cost not to exceed six hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. This would be a twenty-six, uh, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven construction project. This phase will not include Crowdy Plaza, which could be considered as part of a potential twenty twenty-five park and recreation strategic, strategic plan. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a Phase Two professional services agreement with L J B, Inc. of Miami'sburg, Ohio, for the design of the downtown safety and streetscape renovation project at a total cost not to exceed six hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chair.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, on this one, is, does that mean everything is final? Like, are we gonna be able to have an opinion on like the changing of the lanes or anything still?
Absolutely. Um, you know, uh, you know, we narrowed it down when you talked about the lanes. One of the, one of the outstanding issues, uh, the only outstanding issue really because the traffic engineer is still looking at is the, uh, the east entrance from West Main Street on the Wyman's Block, um, and, and whether that can be narrowed down to, to one lane going into the circle. Uh, that's the only outstanding traffic-related, uh, issue. But, uh, all the detailed designs will be brought back to council. Uh, we will have public input before anything is finalized because you then will have to authorize us to go out to bid on construction at some point. Uh, so obviously, we need to make sure that the designs, the final designs are, are what everybody, uh, if not wants, then can live with, understanding all the different pieces that have to go together, starting with the safety issues.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. We reached the point where the citizens' comments, if you have a comment on anything that's on our agenda tonight, please come up to the podium, give your name and address to Mrs. Knight so we can, for the record. And, uh, at this point in time, you'll have a two-minute, uh, roughly two-minute time period to talk about anything you wanna talk about that's on our agenda.
Carol Hendrickson, nine seven five Dickerson Drive, Troy. I would like to urge council to vote no on the extension of the ninety-day moratorium for the, um, adult use cannabis permits. Um, the people voted to have, to allow the sale of cannabis to adults. And this is just an attempt by politicians and bureaucrats to circumvent the will of the people. You've had several extension, uh, moratoriums on this issue, and I don't think there's a need for another one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R fifty-seven, twenty twenty four?
Resolution number R fifty-seven, twenty twenty four. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into agreement with F O P, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., Troy Police Captains Association. This, uh, will cover the terms and conditions of employment, wages, and benefits for the years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes. Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R fifty-eight, twenty twenty four.
Resolution number R fifty-eight, twenty twenty four. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into agreement with the Miami County General Health District for Health Services. This is for the year twenty twenty-five. The amount will be four hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Severt. Please call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R fifty-nine, twenty twenty four?
Resolution number R fifty-nine, twenty twenty four. Resolution adjusting fees related to various services of the City of Troy, Ohio. Any fees that are adjusted will be, uh, changed effective January one, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
No.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
No.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to Resolution R sixty, twenty twenty four. Could you please read that, Mrs. Knight?
Resolution number R sixty, twenty twenty four. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a design-build contract with Brumball Construction, Inc. of Arcanum, Ohio, and authoring Brumball Construction, Inc. to proceed with the project design and ordering of the steel structure and declaring an emergency. The design portion of the contract, including the steel structure, is five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The emergency is so that the structure can be ordered without delay, as it takes four months for delivery, first reading.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. (cough), excuse me, Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, could you read our last resolution of the evening, R sixty-one, twenty twenty-four, please?
Resolution number R sixty-one, twenty twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a professional services agreement with L J B, Inc. of Miami'sburg, Ohio, for the, the design of the downtown safety and streetscape renovation project. Cost not to exceed six hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, first reading.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes. Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to, moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, could you please read ordinance O forty-three, twenty twenty four?
Ordinance number O forty-three, twenty twenty four. Ordinance amending ordinance number O sixty-six, twenty-one, as amended by ordinance number O thirty-five, twenty-two, and ordinance number O thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four. Fixing salaries of police captains of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is adjusting the salary for calen, calendar year, January, start of January one, twenty twenty-four, first reading.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O forty-four, twenty twenty four?
Ordinance number O forty-four, twenty twenty four. Ordinance fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio. This covers the salaries for the police captains, uh, for years twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O forty-five, twenty twenty four?
Ordinance number O forty-five, twenty twenty four. Ordinance opposing a moratorium for a period of ninety days on the granting of any permit, allowing adult use cannabis operators from establishing within the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O forty-six, twenty twenty four.
Ordinance number O forty-six, twenty twenty four. Ordinance accept transfer of four non-productive vacant parcels from the Miami County Board of Revisions, and then transfer the same parcels to the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio. The parcels are located at three six six Miami Street, ten fifteen Meadow Lane, four oh two Lake Street, and one seventy-seven Finsbury Lane, and this is the first reading.
Move to suspend, second.
Mr. Twist, motion to suspend, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westhall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westhall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, could you please read our last ordinance of the evening, ordinance O forty-seven twenty twenty-four?
Ordinance number O forty-seven twenty twenty-four, ordinance amending some sections of Chapter one forty-one of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This updates the benefit provisions for the non-bargaining unit employees, uh, consistent with what may have been granted to the bargaining unit employees. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. Motion to suspend by Mr. (cough) Twist, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Westhall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. Moved to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westhall?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much. Any communication or announcements this week?
No, sir.
I'll do this in the or- correct order this week. Mayor!
(laugh) Um, just because this is the most asked question in the City of Troy all year long. Yes. Um, Halloween is, uh, this year it's on October thirty-first. The last Thursday of every October, um, weather looks good at this point. It's ten days out, we'll see what happens, but it doesn't look like we're gonna have freezing cold weather. You might need an umbrella, but dress for the weather.
And dress so you can be seen.
There you go. And that's all I have.
Mr. Tiderson?
(inaudible).
He's still got the dump, but...
Wow!
No, I'm not gonna mention the dump. I'm not gonna mention the dump yet. Um, that's not till November. Uh, just a reminder that we are doing leaf pickup. We're, um, in that. I haven't seen too many piles. Um, maybe it's a little later this year, but, uh, as usual, whenever it happens, it'll happen all at once, so just leave them in a pile, but please, uh, don't cover up your, uh, your storm drains. Uh, mentioned, uh, earlier with the committee report, that we will in fact have the public comments, the hearing on, uh, the cannabis operations and the planning commission's, um, recommendation on November fourth, which is a regular council meeting, uh, so that will be part of the agenda. And, um, I do wanna acknowledge that, uh, with tonight's passage, uh, five out of the six, uh, uh, bargaining unit contracts have now been ratified. Um, we are, uh, still discussing with, uh, the fire, uh, fire folks, the I A F F, um, and that's, please don't read anything into that. They started a little later, we, we've started with them a little later, um, and so those are, uh, going just as well. Appreciate that, uh, that we could get these done, uh, relatively smoothly, um, but in case anybody asks, um, that's, that's where we're at, uh, on those. Um, that's all I have, thank you.
Try to have a roll.
Um, Mr. President, I have no comments this evening.
Mr. Twist?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Phillips?
I have nothing.
Mr. Pierce?
Uh, after we passed one of our ordinance, we had a request that we make sure that in the downtown plan, that we pay attention to the needs of people with mobility, scooters, and wheelchairs, and, uh, I appreciate somebody submitting that. I believe Patrick already let them know that we are concerned about that, and then we'll address that, uh, in the new plans as well.
Mr. Widdon?
Um, addressing Mrs. Hendrickson's question of concern, I guess, uh, before the resolutions tonight, uh, I did in fact vote for the ninety-day extension because I think we need to make sure we have. If that does in fact go in, we wanna have, uh, proper zoning planning for that, uh, so I don't want it to go in without that, which was a, an admission from my vote tonight, so, just don't want it to go in without any type of planning, and, uh, public input on that as well, so. I voted that way.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall?
I, myself, the same, same reason as that as well, um, but other than that, I have no...
Mr. Schilling?
I have nothing for me.
Mrs. Westhall?
Uh, I wanna reiterate your point that I voted for the ninety-day moratorium because I would like to hear local, uh, input on this subject.
Miss O C?
You to me, thank you. Uh, I would, uh, concur, I'd like to thank staff for the public hearing. It was a interesting back and forth to get to that level, and I'm glad that we, uh, are doing that. To Ms. Hendrickson's point, uh, it was a fifty-two, forty-eight percent, uh, in the City of Troy vote. Um, the moratorium needed to go into effect because there is no zoning for a, uh, dispensary at this time. Uh, so if one is going to be, if the council is going to change or at least deny the planning commission's request, we will need to have some public input, uh, and so my two points for today are if you, uh, how can I say this good, uh, appropriately for, as long as I've been on council, citizens have said that they're not heard. Uh, this is your opportunity to be heard. If you want to be heard on that particular issue, please come on November fourth and make your feelings known. Uh, we as council members can't read everybody's minds, so it's going to be very, uh, instructive for us to see what the turnout and what the input is from the community. Uh, similarly, on November second, which is the Saturday before the public hearing, uh, the at-large, uh, council members will have their, uh, quarterly meeting at Saint Patrick's Soup Kitchen at nine o'clock. Uh, while they, we're not allowed to necessarily work on any legislation, we are there to gather information, uh, and to hear people's opinions and issues that, uh, need to be, uh, discussed at the, uh, city hall level. So I would encourage anybody, whether it's on the recreational marijuana or any other issue that you have, we've, we've resolved issues about mailboxes in the past. So please, if you have concerns, um, take the time, we do listen, but we need to know, we can't read people's minds. So make your voices heard, uh, November second at the Saint Patrick's Soup Kitchen at nine o'clock. Uh, the third thing real quick is I do appreciate council putting the PowerPoint presentation of the comprehensive plan up on the website. Uh, if you, i- it, the comprehensive plan is a hundred and eighty pages. The, uh, condensed version does a very nice summary, so I would ask, uh, if you're interested in a, uh, summary, Reader's Digest condensed version of the comprehensive plan, please look at the PowerPoint that was presented last week. I did three instead of two, I apologize, thank you.
Okay, you get an address for the soup kitchen, just in case they don't know?
Oh, I have no idea. Market at Mulberry Street? Mul- the corner of Mulberry and Water.
That should do it. Mr. Schilling?
Okay, I did, I (cough) wanna ask you as President of Council to, uh, for those that are, will be commenting on the, uh, November fourth, uh, about the issue of, uh, cannabis sales, uh, to set a, um, generous time allotment per person.
I...
And I, that, I think as your decision to do that, and I would ask that, uh, you make it a generous amount of time.
I will do what I've told other people. If you come up and speak at the end, i- you can say whatever you wanna say, as long as you're respectful. Uh, w- you can't go on forever and ever and ever, but if you start repeating, that's when you will, we will try to end it. But as you continue to make your point, we will give, give you leeway to say what you wanna say.
Mr. President, uh, one last point to, and actually it goes back to Mr. Hendrickson's point at our last meeting. For anyone who wants to speak but maybe is a little shy, uh, sometimes it gets missed, but at every meeting, Mr. Roosevelt asks our wonderful clerk of courts, Mrs. Knight, if there's any communications, you can send it to her. I'm sure she'd be happy to read them if you do not wanna speak, um, at the...
And/or come to the at-large meeting on the second.
M- Mr. Chair, just to follow up, we do on our website, um, have that as a webpage, and there is an opportunity to submit on a form, so you don't have to figure out what the email address is. You can just make your comments and hit send.
One more thing.
'Cause I gotta remember what I was gonna ask, 'cause of all these other questions, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure people understand recreational marijuana is legal. That's not what we're voting on. It is legal in the state of Ohio. What we're voting on, not me, but you guys are voting on, is whether or not to have a dispensary in Troy. Recreational marijuana is legal anywhere in the state. We're only voting on what, you guys are voting on whether or not to have a dispensary in Troy.
Yes. We are, and since I forgot what I was gonna say, uh, we are at staff. Any audience comments? This is where you have more leeway to have your say on anything. Mr. Kerber will be timekeeper in case we go really long. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Maida Stratton, and I live at two oh two North Madison in Troy. I have lived there off and on for sixty-eight years, and lately I have seen the neighborhood deteriorate due to lack of the people, uh, that live at certain properties on that street. At one oh two North Madison, there's a dumpster in the street that has been there for months, that obstructs the traffic, which is a two-driveable lane street. Now it's down to one. There's no flashing lights, there's, there's no cones there, and they've been working on that house for two years. I'm not sure if the permits are even correct down there. And then at one oh four North Madison, there's a, uh, motor home, somebody's living in there, been living in it for three or four months. The, the trash is deplorable. If you could just go by there, you'd be like, you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood, and I wouldn't want it, I don't want it in mine anymore, I'm tired. There's Airbnb at two hundred North Madison Street, I don't know if it needs a permit or whatever. Uh, I've made numerous complaints about two hundred North Madison for property maintenance. They'll come out, uh, they'll send them a letter, they'll give them a few more weeks, and but they put a Band-Aid on it, they never fix it, you know? It's just, uh, it's to the point where I'm about ready to sell my property. It's making my property value go down, and I have one of the better houses on Madison Street. There's no reason for that. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, will we refer to staff? Check on all that good stuff. Um, so we are aware of those, um, Mrs. Stratton has, uh, Ms. Stratton has, uh, mentioned those to us, and we did get, uh, get right on it. Uh, the, uh, the dumpster is, uh, now has a, uh, a right-of-way permit, uh, and a timeline. Uh, I'm not sure how long he's been, it, but it has been a, uh, quite a while. Um, he is actually, uh, uh, has gutted the inside and the outside of the house, so it's, it's a long involved process, and, and we are trying to work with him because we wanna see that property, uh, upgraded, uh, and, and all of his, uh, his plans and, and, uh, what he's been doing, albeit slowly, very slowly, and we have, have told him that he needs to step it up, um, and, uh, and, and so he is, uh, he's working on that. Uh, we will get on the, uh, the cones suggestion, um, though, uh, it is a narrow street. Uh, as far as the RV, uh, staff did go out, talk to the property owner, um, they were actually kind enough to, uh, even though we probably didn't have a right, and so hopefully Grant won't sweat it out, uh, they did allow us to go in and, and, uh, not us, but staff, uh, to go in and take a look inside, uh, the, the RV. Uh, there was no evidence that somebody is, is living there. Uh, it was, um, a, uh, an estate inheritance, uh, they are winterizing and fixing it up. Uh, they say that they are going to, uh, sell the RV. Uh, staff did talk to them about, uh, cleaning up the, uh, the property, and they do have it, uh, on their calendar to give them a reasonable, but not too reasonable, amount of time, and then go and follow up on that. Uh, I will double-check on, uh, two hundred, uh, two hundred Madison. We don't have any regulations, uh, regarding Airbnbs, uh, but that does, of course, does not excuse any, uh, outstanding property maintenance. Uh, I think, uh, uh, what, uh, Ms. Stratton describes is something that sometimes we go through where we will tell people, we will send them a letter, they will do the bare minimum, they will meet the minimum of the code, and we will have to go back out there because inevitably, uh, uh, the property declines again. If this is that, uh, case, then tomorrow staff will go out and, uh, uh, re-encourage them to, to get their property cleaned up, uh, ASAP.
Is, is the RV on the street, or is it?
Uh, I believe it's in the driveway.
It's in the driveway. I assume this will be correct? Our sign police will be out, since it's around election time, and we have, should have no signs between the curb and the sidewalk, correct? Or they will, yeah?
Um, they, they are out, uh, I mean, we don't target the, uh, political signs per se, but, uh, anything that's, uh, in the right-of-way between the curb and the sidewalk, or the tur- curb and the telephone pole, uh, is in the, uh, public right-of-way, and so we will, uh, we will address anything in, in all of them, and, and we continue to do that. They're out pretty much daily.
Anyone else from the public? Comments, questions?
Good evening, I'm Steve Hendrickson at nine seventy-five Dickerson. I got a couple of, uh, suggestions. If we have a speaker, I, I was, I was watching the presentation on the sixteenth of the, uh, Com- Comprehensive Plan, and if you look at the tape of that, you'll be, be, be as bewildered as I was when I watched it. You could not see a single slide that was, was shown, so if you were in the bill, in the room, you could see it fine, but for the rest of us who, who watched it on, on the screen, had no idea what he was talking about. And then, say, add to my confusion and irritation, it's like, oh, you can get a copy of this tomorrow. You should've had a copy of it beforehand. Members of this, of you should've had a copy of it, and the public should've had a copy of it beforehand, not afterwards. To me, it was like a done deal. It's another, it's, it's just like the first one you had for the public, and it's like, oh, go look at these placards. It's like, are you kidding me? So I understand you got a check mark next to public things, but it's any more public than a man in the moon. You should be embarrassed to have called that. In the future, have a camera installed either next to the projector or in here that can show what's on the screen, 'cause right now you don't have any electronic data to go back to that, look at it, and make any, any sense of it. I was hoping I could take my hundred and eighty-page version and follow along, but no, that was, that was, as Mr. Severt mentioned during the meeting, it's like, oh, it's hard to follow along with you, 'cause we don't have it. So it's like, is this deliberately trying to confuse us? I understand I'm not as smart as a lot of people, but I'm not as dumb as a lot of people either, so please, next time, if we're gonna do something like that, have it available before the meeting, so we can follow along. The other thing I wanna comment on, Mr. Severt's comment. I hope that the public comes on November second. These meetings are wonderful, and I hope the rest of the committee, council, comes also. I found out more things at that quarterly meeting than anyplace else. It's a wonderful casual, I think it's casual (laugh). Maybe if I were on the other end, I wouldn't think it was so casual. But I, I find those meetings just great, and I hope, I hope, uh, I've, there's some of the other council members go, and I would encourage all of you to go, it's a, it's a great thing to do. The other thing is on November fourth, there's a public meeting on the cannabis issue, and I hope it's open, and I hope there's enough time to discuss this issue. It's a contentious issue, and I also hope that if the public really wants to have this available, that sometime on maybe the fifth or sixth afterwards, council gets together and says, either we're gonna continue this embargo, or we're gonna just cut it off, we don't need another, another, uh, timeout while we consider, consider any more input. I think that's about enough. I, I, I just wanna comment on, th- this was not a good example of trying to get the public involved. When you can't see what's going on, and you're absolutely confused, you can put the TV on and go back to bed. I mean, it, it was just, from a, somebody that wasn't in the room, and I wasn't, it was extremely confusing, to say the least. So I think it's, I think the public deserves more than that. They should have a clear, if you want public input, they have to understand what it is you're saying. My feeling when I got done with it, this was another razzamatazz, we're, we've got it, guys, we know what we're doing, and then we don't really care two, two bits about what the public thinks.